This meeting is very important. I want you to be joining us from Zoom or at the ring. We really don't call it this meeting. I'd also like to add, the purpose of this is for Wyoming Charter School Authorizing Board to hear your opinions about the proposed charter school. It is not important to talk about where the schools can position them. If any of the discussions that they have in the meeting, this is purely an application for the charter. My name is Jim Maydasey and I'm the Chair of the Wyoming Charter School Authorizing Board. My only charter school authorizing board is also represented by one of the Board of Directors. Joseph Meyer, Dr. Almas, John Bassett, and Don Tengler. We have three other members who are now with us. In July, the Alpine group submitted an application to allow Charter School Authorizing Board. The application has been made completely and will be reviewed by Dr. Almas. And is available on the Wyoming Charter School Authorizing Board website. Well, that was made on our website. So let me, I'm going to be, we know the only interview that we have this afternoon will be on there. And this information will be on the other floor. The Board brought us to thought about the proposed school. How do we do the main and individuals as well as the people that are here to listen? And are there any questions to remember? We need to have questions about the charter school itself. But now we'll be able to answer those specific questions. All right, I don't want to lie about what I mean. But I will now allow you to proceed. When we complete, we're going to go through the question only from also taking in person. People paying attention and then those on Zoom. We encourage you to please be safe and breathe in your comments. We are looking for comments in three minutes. Dr. Ross will be timing you. So let's be respectful. Please be respectful. People look like we know a lot of folks here who participate. We would also like to make sure that you are in Alpine yourself. Tell us where you're from. Tell us if you have children, close friends, the charter school. And so we get an idea of who you're listening to. Also, if we did. All of you are here to test our way of things, why not? And do that. Like we're helping you go through that process. So let's start with one of you first.
Three minutes. And thank you for coming. I sort of spoke two days ago. I've been here for 31 years. I run a local business. Nine years ago, I ran a local business in Etna. I know 31 years I've employed hundreds of people. And the issue always comes down to affordable housing in the school. There's kids on the bus for hours. We've owned this for decades. As I said in the previous meeting, it's stupid as very strange, really wonderful, very good. We attended a fundraiser for a school. Something we've always wanted. This town in Mississippi. I'm in construction. And affordable housing in the school is what, what Alpine is, is really growing for. And it brings us to the town. And some of maybe one last maybe that's Alpine is the largest town in the state to have a school. You got a high school. And I really think all of that tells me we've worked out each month in this community. So please consider us. We appreciate your time.
Good evening. Thank you for coming with the Stephen. And let me identify myself. My name is Robert Wilbur. I am a retired medical doctor. Practiced OB-GYN for many years and live here in Alpine full-time. And thrilled to be here and this community just continues to grow and thrive. But the one thing that it's missing is having a public school or just having a school. And I have many friends, colleagues, and others who consider moving to Alpine. But one of the, those with school-aged children, one of the biggest problems with moving to the community is that there's not a school option for them within Alpine. And these kids are traveling, you know, as, as Bill said before, a very long period of time. Sometimes an hour or more to get to a public school. Some parents choose to homeschool their children as a result. And I think this is something that the community wants, needs. And it'll be a great asset to everyone within, within the community. And it just, it gives everyone another option for just educating their children in a non-traditional public school basis. And I was just very impressed with reading about the organization that plans on opening the school here in Alpine. I have a friend that actually sends their child to the school in Draper, Utah. Very impressed, you know, with their comments. And again, I hope this does materialize. And again, thank you for being here and thank you for considering Alpine as a location for the charter school. Have a good evening.
My name is Richard Jenkins. Lived in Alpine area for 49 years and 16 days. I have supported four children through, fully through the Star Valley educational system. They've all done okay. But it is a struggle to commute the long distance for six years of their lives up to Afton. And even to have the kindergarteners go 18 miles to school is not a necessary thing. So I certainly support this charter school. I was involved in trying to recognize the need for a school many years ago. As I was on the town council and at one time the mayor. So please consider us for a charter school.
Hi, my name is Dominique Bro. I'm a resident of Alpine. I have two school-aged children, one that goes to N Elementary and one that goes to Thane Elementary. And I'm in support of this charter school. It would be wonderful to have a school close by. Really, there's a lot of reasons, but the one that I can think of is time management. We get our children on the bus at 6:58 is when I put them on the bus, which is pretty early, especially in the middle of winter. My, and my daughter is on the bus until about 7:45 to get to Thane. And so that is a large chunk of her time that could be spent honestly sleeping and helping that little brain continue to grow. So I think having that option here for a school would just be beneficial for the work-life or a school-life balance for our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Willhite. And I spent 27 years up in Jackson. I have a construction painting company. I have a gardening company. I'm a wedding florist and a holiday decorator. And eight years ago, I started a company called Teetown Surf Company. And we take people out to the Palisades Lake here. It's a charter company and we teach them how to wake surf. So that's really fun. During COVID, I sold my house up in East Jackson and made the permanent move down to Alpine. My home, I've had my home in Riverview Meadows for over a decade. The school's proposed land is a few blocks from my house in Riverview Meadows. I have a boy that's in second grade and my daughter is in fifth grade. So one in Etna and one in Thane. We did one year at our house in Riverview Meadows and they got on the bus at 6:50 in the morning. And that was challenging, to say the least. So I built a house in Etna Village Estates and moved my family down to Etna. So we're across the street from the school. So my kids now wake up at 6:50 in the morning and we have more time to get them ready for school. They actually get to eat breakfast. I could not feed my kids at 6:30 in the morning before they got on the bus in Riverview Meadows. But this charter school, I'm 100% for this charter school because it will give us the opportunity to move back home to Alpine, which was our plan when we sold our home in East Jackson. I honestly just couldn't do it in Riverview Meadows with putting them on the bus at 6:50 in the morning. So my house in Riverview Meadows is on the Airbnb. It's done really well, but we do want to move home. And this school would give us the opportunity to be able to do that. And the children wouldn't have to be on the bus. They are going from Alpine to Etna. It's a five-lane highway, 65 miles an hour. And the bus picking them up at 6:50 and the bell not ringing till 7:45. My, my fifth grader is just getting way more screen time than she probably should with her phone on the bus. And so that is kind of another downfall of it too. So we would just like to be able to move home to, to Alpine and come back to Riverview Meadows. And this school is going to give us the opportunity to be able to do that. And I really think as a community that we can come together and unite and come to an agreement. As we know, there's been a lot of disagreements on this school and where it should go and whatnot. But I really think that there's so many people in favor of having this school that if we can come together and build the school, that I feel like it will be super successful. And it will just be wonderful for the whole community. It's gonna, you know, give us a sense of community. Last Wednesday, there was a physician that got up here and talked that lives in my subdivision in Riverview Meadows. And he said, if we don't build a school here, I don't know if I can stay. And there's people like that that we don't want to move out of this valley. We want people like that to stay. So, thank you so much. Time's up. I could talk all night, you guys.
My name is Philip Clausen. I'm a resident of Alpine and I have an eight-year-old daughter. My daughter's a little different. We actually commute with my daughter up to Jackson. We commit a substantial amount of our income to paying for school in Jackson. So, you know, we're a little different in respects to some of the situations. But our daughter still commutes along with all of these other folks. I want to first thank you guys for coming and showing and taking your time here. As part of your decision to approve a school charter, charter school within an area. I'm sure that you have to consider both the statistical situations of each county and the people that severely need this. And I hope that you recognize that when factoring in different populations in schools, that you'll see that Alpine is in dire need of a school. That, that, you know, if, if we are faced against Cody as the other potential school, as a virtual school that already has a school system. I, I beg you to understand that the needs of our community far outweigh the needs of a Cody school. And I'd like to also address some of the comments and, and that occurred last meeting. And I want to say that, that I want to thank the Alpine School Committee for essentially baking us this cake and giving us this community, this, this opportunity to have a school that, that our children have been mal-luxurious and they, they had desperately been waiting for this cake. And we need to feed them. And, and there were some concerns about curriculum. Well, I just say that's a part of the color of the frosting of this cake that these people have baked. And, and our community needs to, to have this. And whether we've been waiting for this cake for 30 years. There's stories from Dan Jenkins about how long he's fought and so many of the other stories that we've heard. And, and I want to say for any that was concerned about the color of the frosting or the placement of this cake on the table. Whether we give them this certain land or we give them another land. We need to realize that we can't throw away this cake and put it in the trash and wait for the next 10 years for somebody to bake the cake that doesn't have the same color frosting that we ordered. So I, I just beg you guys to consider that. Thank you.
Just wanted to stand. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Weirda. I'm an Alpine resident and I have a seven-year-old daughter in second grade here. And I'm going to go off topic just for a moment. I have the great pleasure of serving as a board member for the Friends of the Alpine Library. For those who don't know, it's a little nonprofit here in town that basically our goal is fundraising to support programming here at the Alpine Library. Every single summer for the past several years now, Ms. Rochelle, the children's librarian, runs out of money during her summer reading library program. No matter how much she tries to think ahead, there are always more kids than she anticipates and kids that are more consistently involved in her summer reading program. So our little organization steps in to help make her reading program success. I bring all this up just to say that this community is full of kids who love to read, who love to learn, who are excited about school, who are excited about being at the library. My personal opinions echo what everybody who just came before me said. While the need is dire, please understand that you're investing in kids that are ready for this. You're not going to meet resistance. You're not going to meet unmotivated kids. They're ready for this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adessa Melnick. I am an Alpine resident and I'm also an English as a Second Language teacher. I do think this community needs a school, but it gets its, this particular school that I'm not sure of. With Alpine's constantly growing town, as it was stated. And with that also comes a lot of diversity, a lot of families with multilingual families, multicultural families. Students who are going to need ELD programming, language supports. And looking at the data for this particular charter school, I'm seeing a lot of critical need. A lot of their schools from Utah are in critical need for the ESL programs. A few are developing and there was only one with typical. So I think this also needs to be brought into consideration with the charter school that is chosen. Because our community is like becoming more diverse right now. So, thank you.
Hello, Robert Hagedorn. I'm a retired executive and philanthropist. The, the future is definitely belongs to Alpine. There's a migration from Jackson down to Alpine because there's just no affordable housing up there. And they're bringing, and these are all young families, which is what we want in this country, in the state, in this county. And by, by allowing us that, that's the only thing we're missing is a school. We have a medical facility now, brand new. We have this terrific market, supermarket. Now, we have all this available housing that's coming online. All we need is a school. Thank you.
I'm Eric. I'm a project manager for a construction company and a father of a four-year-old who I'm hoping will attend this school if it's approved. For me, what is, oh, and I live in Star Valley Ranch. Sorry. So what, what is exciting to me about the school is the organization that's going to run it. I would say in general, my politics are probably pretty middle of the road. Not really fitting necessarily with the community I'm in always. But I'm not looking for a school to teach my daughter what to think. I'm looking for them to teach her how to think or, or to think about things in general. I think a classical education would do that. I think it would be unlikely for me to get a school that perfectly aligned with my politics. Probably wouldn't happen. So I'm happy to have a good school that would teach math and reading and all the things that they teach. So yeah, that's, that's my, and then as far as, I'm losing my train of thought, but that's, that's basically it. So thank you.
My name is Joe Tompkinsen. I'm a resident, only seven years in Alpine. I'm retired. I'm a refugee from the failed state of California, where my father was a farmer and I was bused five, six hours a week. And if you, just to put it in context, when I first came up here, I came up here because of the community, because of the, the way of life. And the fabric of any community is education. That's just it. Now, just to put things in context, when I drive around with my wife and I see these kids standing in the snow waiting for a bus. And I remember being bused an hour one way and an hour back. That's, my math is right. That's 10 hours a week, 40 hours a month, 15 days a year, school year, that you're spending on a bus. That doesn't seem right to me, especially when you have a community that's growing. I just looked at the census here the other day. When I first came up here, the population was 821. Today it's a little over 1,200. So the busing and the schooling is only going to get worse. And these kids are going to be spending more and more time. And I can tell you from experience that as you sit on a bus and you get tired, you get cranky, you also lose a lot of your incentive. So again, just to put it in context, would you like to spend 15 days on a bus? So I see no reason, from my perspective, and I'm hoping that my grandchildren move up here and my kids send them to a good school. And so from my perspective, that's a lot of time, wasted time. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Green. And I live at the back end of Fraser Road. And to continue with what he was saying, my children have to go to a bus stop, which some of them, not all children, like my kids have to walk there. And it's, it's scary. And when there's six-foot-tall snowbanks, no lighting, it's scary for them. And when the people, or people were saying that this new school is scary because there's a brewery half-mile down the road. It's, it's kind of mind-blowing because none of them have ever looked at where our children now have to go on the school bus. It's scary. At six in the morning, or 6:55 in the morning, it's dark, there's no lighting, and there's snowbanks. And at the, at the end of the day, there's people going down the road on ETVs or snowmobiles. And there's, they don't know, they're on vacation. And that's just what our kids have to deal with. And that's, I mean, that we just think that's just what we have to deal with. But then we showing that now these people care about this new school and how those children will be treated or how their safety is, is concerning. But our kids are now, there's no concern over them. It's, it's really sad.
Thank you guys for coming here to hear us. My name's Dave Burchard. My wife and I have lived here in Alpine 23 years. We raised our son Jake here and we are very proud to say that he is now enrolled at UW. We worked his tail off to earn that privilege. I would like to address those with young children who may be unsure if they want the school. This school. By comparison to students in Afton, my son spent an extra hour every day on a bus. He often didn't get home until 7:00 PM. That leaves very little time for dinner, homework, and family time. And a lot of time, you know which one of those gave up. We miss him terribly and we would have, we would give anything to have those hours back today. He's seven hours away at University of Wyoming. This is our opportunity to get those hours back for countless families in the future. For those that don't think this is the right school, that don't want to do this, you don't have to change what you're doing now and what your options are now. You can continue on and send them down the road on the bus. This is an option to make that better though.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Chandell. I've lived here about five years. And I think when the population, Joe was mentioning before, I think the greater Alpine areas, the bigger. And as I, me and my wife consider starting a family, which we will start a family, the biggest limiting factor is education. And that just, it's a no for here. We can't stay and, and I don't want to ship my kids off or drive an hour to Jackson, those things. But as I hear people talk tonight and I sit back and think about the beauty and amazing, not just the beauty of this place, but the beauty of the diversity of this place. I grew up in an amazing place in northern New Jersey and I had a great community around me that really shaped a lot. When people say, well, how did you end up being you at your age? It's because of the community that I was around. And I think about Jackson and the greater Jackson area and Lincoln County with the diversification of it and the, the exposure that kids can get here and some of the many people in this room. It's unbelievable. And I, and I didn't look, think about that years ago and didn't consider it. And I'll be appreciative as much as I do now where with the right schooling, it's not going to, it's going to only draw people here, but it's also going to support the locals that are here that an hour on the bus is unacceptable. These kids, I don't know how they end up school and can pay attention. More importantly, what the type of student and citizens that we create here is unbelievable. It really is. And I've seen that and we really do have a great group here and we have great. I live at the airport, which is a great group of people. But we've tried our best to integrate here and have exposure to kids. And I want my kids to have that exposure here. So it's an absolute yes from my perspective, but you see. So it's an absolute yes from my perspective, but you see the draw that these families need here. From my consideration, it would just be a no and I think it's going to, I don't think it's going to change what we have here. So I do appreciate consideration. And I also want to say, all the work that people put in, even putting this on the table, I said before that I've only been here five years and the opportunity that they've created to even have this meeting is unbelievable. So I want to thank everyone for doing that.
Thank you all for being here. I've lived in Alpine for almost eighteen years and, pardon? I'm Amy Floyd, sorry. I've lived in Alpine for almost eighteen years. I've worked in Jackson that whole time. My third grader is in school in Thane. He gets sick if my husband's not available. I think if I'm kind of speeding, it's almost an hour and a half to get to him, my job. Which has happened before. I am very happy with elementary school that we are in currently. This one will start kindergarten next year. I think that the public schools that we have currently are amazing. They are just not here in Alpine. My biggest concern is middle school, high school. Because two hours of drive time from my office to my kids is not doable. I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm scared about it and I've been worried about it the whole time I've lived in Alpine for seventeen years. It's time that we make a change. Thank you all so much.
Hi, good evening and thanks for making the era, time here to, to visit with all of us. My name's Luke Gastel. I'm a resident of Alpine. This is my daughter Emma. She's six months old and she's really excited for school here in Alpine. I'll tell you now, her great-grandma lives in Afton and whenever we go over to see her, she just hates that drive already. And I don't think she's going to enjoy it anymore, you know, when she comes of age to go to school. But beyond the selfish reasons for her, which I don't think are necessarily selfish, I think everyone's entitled to that time in their day. And that time that will be enriching to her development as a person. But for this community as well, I think that time is of the essence. Some points have been made about the community and, you know, trajectory, maybe this community's on and how this is becoming a place where people can afford to live in Jackson and they're moving here. And I think that a school would be paramount for building this community. So that way it's diverse with families and it doesn't become a place of Airbnbs and vacation homes for people. We'd like to have, you know, a community where kids can go to school and, and have relationships with friends and, you know, have that sense of community maybe we all know and grew up with. So again, appreciate you guys' time. I'm going to borrow time with her, so I want to make sure I can sort of get up and talk. So, thanks. Yeah. If you have something to say? This is Emma. So, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jen Baki. I'm an Alpine resident. I have three kids in the district and I'm also a teacher in this district. Like Amy said, I love our elementary schools. I'm so blessed to teach at such a wonderful school. I know we've talked a lot about time on the bus, but as a parent of three and a teacher of young children, I see how it impacts their ability to learn. They come to school so exhausted. My kids come home from school really exhausted, so if there's homework, it's really hard to get to that because they're just wiped out. My youngest child has special needs. She has Down syndrome. She gets on the bus at 6:40. By the time she gets home, we can read a book, we eat dinner and we go to bed. If she has any homework, we try to get to it in the morning, but we don't always get to it. So not only, like everyone said, are we missing out on that family time, but I feel like academically, a lot of these students could be a lot further along had they had more time. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Pamela Simons and I first came here in nineteen ninety-eight. And I don't actually know what you're looking for, the criteria for choosing, but I'd like to represent sort of the old group. I think that a school is the heart of a community. I'm from North Dakota. And I think Star Valley supports our high school activities admirably. And I've watched a lot of the activities on Zoom, but it's not the same as going there. And I can't drive through the Narrows in the pitch black and hit a moose in the dead of winter. And so we've talked a lot about the geography of the thing. But, but Wyoming being the way it is, that distance can be formidable in most of the year. And I think that the activities that, that the people of my generation would love to participate in in supporting the junior high and the high school activities would be just wonderful for our community. And like I said, the school is the heart of a community and we need you to give us that heart.
Hi, my name is Kathy Metkowska and I'm a resident here in Alpine. I have an eight-year-old, or eleven-year-old daughter along with my husband. And one of the things, I mean, we're echoing what everybody's saying here is that that community time is really hard. I mean, like everybody else, our daughter has to get up and she's gone for ten, twelve hours a day, which is an adult working day and it's hard for an adult, let alone a kid. But one of the things that I want to iterate to everyone is also that having the school that distance away for a lot of parents who commute and work in Jackson, or if you work in Afton or even Teton Village or over in Idaho. I also can't participate in my child's school. I can't be there to support her. I can't be there to encourage her in those activities. And there's a lot of activities that she also misses out on because we have to choose between coming home and having dinner and having family time or being able to go down to get her to extracurricular activities. And I know that the school does the best they can to accommodate all of that. But even after time and time again, the community asking the school district to look into having a school down here. And after twenty, thirty years of having that discussion, I think that we've all come to the conclusion that this charter school is going to be one of our best options. And we appreciate you coming down here and taking the time to listen to all of our concerns. And getting to know why, why the school here would create a much stronger community and would create much stronger academics for the kids. And just give all of us a place to be able to go and support our kids and to be able to be part of those activities and help grow activities within the community for them. Thank you.
Thank you to the state charter board for being here and considering Alpine. I am Melinda Ryan. I'm a community member and I'm a mother of two boys. I have lived in Alpine for the last six years and I absolutely love Alpine. I moved from Wilson and I have never looked back. Last year, we made the tough decision to send our children to school in Jackson. If she knew it was a four and six-year-old, was absolutely terrifying. And I was doing it alone as my husband has a business here in Alpine. This year, we are under contract to purchase a one-bedroom condo. So I can selfishly be part of their education. I'm asking you to consider the family life that we are sacrificing here to be part of our children's education. You can make that happen for us. I want to say thank you to the inaugural committee for the three years of work and the hundreds of thousands of dollars you've put in. Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming and listening to us. I am Kathleen Jenkins and I've lived in Alpine since nineteen seventy-five. I've raised four children here. I had a two-year-old when I arrived and had my others after that. And I just am so thankful that this is a possibility, that we might see it happen. I've been waiting all these years and my kids went to thirty-five miles or whatever it is, every day for all their life. And it's been hard, but they did have a good education as best as they could. But like some people have said, the community cannot be involved in it. There's been many parents that would call me from Jackson because I ran a business here in town. And they would say, my daughter just fell and hurt herself at the school. Can you go pick her up? I'm in Jackson. And so there's, it's a definite problem. A whole lot longer to go clear to Afton than it is just down to Alpine. We really need this school. I'm really excited about the program that we're looking into and hoping that it comes through. I think it's going to be a wonderful situation for our children. And as the other lady that's my age said, it's going to be great to be able to run down and be part of things when they're having grandparents a day and, and the children are putting on a play for Easter or Halloween or whatever they're going to do. And it's just, it's just exciting to think that it'll be right here in our town. Thank you so much for considering Alpine.
Okay, folks, I have a thirty-second rule.
Hi there. Thanks for being here. My name's Eric Green. I'm the mayor of Alpine. I moved here eighteen years ago and basically never looked back. As you know, or hopefully you know, Alpine is the fastest-growing town in the state of Wyoming. And it's definitely in need of a school. We always thought, when we moved here, what are the education opportunities? And in spite of not having a school, we have two kids that are both in high school right now. And I just want to tell you real quickly about, last year, my daughter was a freshman. She would get on the bus at six fifty-five. After, this was in January, after school, she would go to indoor track practice until close to six o'clock. And then she had open gym for volleyball, because she's on the volleyball team, from six thirty to eight thirty. My wife would have to go pick her up and she wouldn't even get home till nine thirty at night. And then that's when we start homework. And throughout the indoor track season, it was rinse, repeat every single day. So I wanted to make sure that you knew as well that, hopefully you received our letter of support from the Alpine Town Council. But if you didn't, there's unanimous support for this school. Also, we had a work session last week and it was very well attended by over two hundred people. And I don't know if anyone there was against having a school. Obviously, I would say it had universal support as well. This school, to me, is very important because both my daughters may not be able to attend this school, but I hope my grandkids do eventually. So I'm asking you to choose Alpine and give us the future that we all think we deserve.
Hi there. My name is Megan. I don't have any kids, but I want to applaud all of you parents here for all of the work that you do and my hat goes off to you. I don't know how many times over the years living in Jackson off and on since ninety-seven. And I was born on a potato farm, so I've been coming over and camping in Alpine all my life. I have been behind some of the scariest car accidents I've ever seen in the canyon. And I think of these parents because not only do you not have cell service, if you're even fifteen minutes late trying to get to your child, they know mom and dad are going to be late again, but they don't know why. And they might not know how long. And there might not be anybody to, you know, take care of your child. I'm guessing that sometimes kids are left at school or with parents, or maybe they have a designated place that they're supposed to go. But that would be terrifying to be stuck, you know, behind the snow. Or one day, there was a gentleman who broke both of his legs and I think both of his arms and a chopper couldn't even land in the canyon. And the man was screaming and we all just sat there behind him and watched for who knows how long. I held a girl in my arms on the road that her, we had to break her out of her truck. And those kind of things, you can't even get an ambulance to respond. So this is life or death for these parents. Please bring this school to Alpine.
Hi guys, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time. My name is Melissa Rockletz. I'm a resident of Alpine. It may seem like I have no skin in the game because my daughter is twenty-one and attends the University of Wyoming as well. But my sister-in-law and my in-laws were both educators in Powell. And my sister-in-law is currently a teacher in Cody. So I know the resources that they have. And I have a lot of friends that have young children here. And knowing what they feel like they're going to face in sending their young children to school so far away, this school would make a huge difference, difference for this community. And I feel like it is an integral part of the community that is due. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Emmett Mayvey. I work in the city limit of Alpine and I grew up here. I don't live here right now. I live south of town. But I'm one of the students that everyone talks about, where I grew up commuting an hour each way. Thirteen thousand miles of school year to go to school. And there's a statistic that Richard Jenkins came up with a long time ago that hasn't been discussed tonight. But the students who live in Alpine have an average one point oh GPA lower than the kids who live in Afton. So this is an Alpine problem. And it's been an Alpine problem for a really long time. It's now in your lap and we're asking you to help us solve a problem that wasn't your problem, but you're the only ones who can solve it now. I think in the nineties, the people who lived in Alpine felt we were ready, we were big enough and we deserved the school. And if this application was in front of you in the nineties, you probably would have approved it. You fast forward to two thousand twenty-four, we're still sitting here looking for the opportunity and it's in front of you and we're asking you to help us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruby Neve. I'm currently a sophomore in high school. I went to school in Star Valley from first to fifth grade. In fifth grade, my mom moved me up to Jackson, so we didn't have to make the commute an hour a day. We were fortunate enough to have that opportunity. I just recently moved that down. And I'm now going to school in Star Valley again. But I remember like growing up, getting up at six, going to school, getting on the bus. It's cold, it's dark, it's scary. I fall a lot. I fall in the snow. I get all wet and cold. But I, it would be very beneficial to Alpine to have a school here. And I think it'll be very good for the children because it's, it was really hard for me growing up to commute all that way. So please consider it. Thank you for your time. So please consider it. Thank you for your time.
Jeremy Larson, we met earlier. I'll throw out one more anecdote as far as the need for a school and the perceived need that we're not going to get what we need from Lincoln Number Two. Year, year and a half ago, Mayor Green invited Lincoln Number Two Board and administrators to Alpine to say, what can we do? What is the algorithm? How can we get a school here? And we had a great discussion throughout the evening. As it started to get a little bit later, kind of they were fidgeting and moving. And then hearing some whispers like, hey, you know, this is Alpine. Everybody there for the most part lives in Afton, forty-five minutes away at least. And, you know, we, it's time for us to get going because it's getting late. And they said that out loud and I'll give it to, is Kelly still here? Right there. We met Kelly earlier. She got up there and she said, oh, oh, you gotta get home because it's an hour drive. My kids do that twice a day. That boom showed me right there. They don't get it. They're not going to get it. And it's, we gotta really think outside the box in order to get a school here to Alpine. And that's the work that a lot of us has put into this. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Cassie Tansy. I've been living in Alpine for six years. I have a son and a daughter in second and third grade. I don't want to redo, 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 I can't say anything. Echo too much on what everyone else has been saying. I just want to say with all the difficulties that come along with having school outside your community also comes solutions. And just Jen spoke earlier tonight and she helped make arrangements for my son to go to football so I could be here because my husband works in Jackson. The reason I'm saying that is because this community really comes together to help each other out, whether it's getting a neighbor or a friend off the bus so that we don't miss more work, things like that. I think that if you decide to bring your school to Alpine, you'll be really blown away by the togetherness and kindness of this community, just like I was when I moved here six years ago. Thank you.
And I apologize, we got to leave after previous engagement. Biggest town in Alpine without a school, fastest-growing town in the state of Wyoming. And it was at thirteen thousand miles?
Yeah.
A year or total?
Year.
A year. So to put that in perspective, that's halfway around the world every year. So please consider us. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
So I will share with you that in addition to this meeting tonight, you are welcome to send comments to the, how do they find the address where they send the comments?
It's on the press release and it's on your website.
It is on our website. We are open for public comment until the twenty-fifth of September. So this is just another piece of the puzzle that we're using in order to enable us to make a good decision, which will be made on the tenth of October. So we truly appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We will be here until seven o'clock.
There's one online. There's a comment online.
There's a comment online, okay.
Madam Chair, this is typed online, so I'll just read it out loud. From V bias, we moved to Alpine three years ago from a charter, a charter school in Laramie. We moved here to accept a healthcare career and hope that we can stay here. However, with the time our two kids spend on the bus has been horrible. Not only are the kids on the bus for a long time, but the amount of exposure to bad behaviors for that long is incredible. The amount of bullying that happens when kids are on a bus for that long is horrifying. We need to give our children a better experience. This school would help ease a lot of bullying exposure.
You all don't need to stay, but we will.
I already used my minutes earlier, but just a quick question. Decision will be made on October tenth. How was that decision communicated to the community? To Mayor Green or Mr. Funk or?
I'm sure the letters will.
Well, I'm sure. I was curious how that was going to be.
It will certainly be on our website. There will be a press release that will go out. I'm sure you're going to hear lots about it. So thanks, everybody, for coming. If you want to hang around and wait and see if anybody else wants to come in and testify.
If we can have, we have another comment online, so if we can have everyone be quiet for just a minute, please. Excuse me. We have another comment online, so we'll need it quiet in here, please.
Looks like he disappeared. Sorry. He had his hand up, but then he disappeared. Oh, yep. So it's on their, it's on their website. So if you go to if you go to edu.wyoming.gov and then at the very bottom, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, you'll see the board logo and that'll take you to their page. And then if you go to their page, it says, I'll show you, you can see it here. It says where it seeks public comment, so you'll click to the link there and that'll bring up all of that and then you can comment there. Yep.
Get it blasted out so that people that want.
Absolutely. Yep. And this has all the information, so it'll have the meeting recordings too if they want to watch the meetings. We'll get that most. Yeah. Yeah. You'll be on it. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So it's going to be under it's edu.wyoming.gov. And then if you scroll all the way in the bottom, you'll see the board logo. And so if you click there and save, see where it says public comment and you go there. Yep. And that's where the meeting. Both, yeah, the one this afternoon and the one. No, that was. It's edu.wyoming.gov. Edu.wyoming.gov. And if.
Wyoming.gov.
Yeah.
Y O or Wyoming?
Wyoming. And then if you scroll all the way to the bottom, you'll see the logo, the board logo down here, the screen one. And that'll take you to their page. And then on their page, it says, seek to comment. The applications are on that site too. Yep.
A little piece of paper so I can, I'd like to get the email address to be able to email them. And they said we could email until the twenty-fifth of September, wasn't that it? I didn't have anything to write off or write it down and I couldn't remember what the.
Let me go grab the pens.
I started to and then I just think I just.
I'm writing on here. I'm guessing other people are going to want this.
I'm glad I asked, right?
Well, there's an easier way to find it. It says, write it down. So if you go to edu.wyoming.gov.
Oh, okay.
And then, then you'll be able to navigate to it, but that's. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you get lost in there, just put edu.wyoming.gov and you'll find it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
My daughter wanted to come, but she didn't have her baby sitter kids, so.
Yeah.
At least she can.
Exactly. No problem.
Did you get it? Can I?
I did, yeah. You just go online, go to edu.wyoming.gov.
Take it as smart. There you go.
Yes, I wanted to know too.
Okay. Yeah, so it'll have everything on there for the, the school. It has the applications. It'll have the public comment period, all of that.
And this is where we would, the comments. Here, or do you know anything about how they make the decisions? The algorithms for decision-making as to whether or not.
Like she said, there, it's like a lot of, they're going to take all this information in and figure it out from there. Yeah, there's a lot of different pieces and moving parts.
Time plan on it.
So they will make a decision. The board will vote on October tenth. And that is the public meeting as well.
And then when would they start?
That is a detail I don't know. That would be part of. Yeah, that'll be part of the negotiation of the contract and all of that. Yep. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
So I was like, it was the first time I hung up and then called and I was like, he's fine. He was in the parking lot. He was stopped. They backed him. They hit him pretty hard. Gave him a lot of insurance. I tried only twelve years. I know, I know. Yeah. Who's just got this far? So much. I was like, it's fixable, it's viable.
Especially when it's like not get followed while the meeting.
I know.